It is seven o'clock. It's time to call this meeting to order. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Watkins, if you would mind waiting us for the prayer. Appreciate it.
Dear Heavenly Father, please be with us as we do the city's business. Please help us to make the right decisions for the city and everybody else. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right. Call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Dunphy?
Here.
Ms. Grant?
Here.
Ms. Watkins?
Here.
You have to call her. You have to tell her your name.
Ms. Johnson?
And do we have to say something?
Um, yes. We have something to read.
Okay.
You've learned your lesson about reading, you know?
Still haven't read.
Do we need to let the general carry the ads out or no?
It's a communication.
There it is. On June 19th, this is my notice to council that I have resigned my seat effectively. Thank you, Wanda.
If you need a motion to exhale.
Motion to exhale.
Second. Call the roll.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Do we have a choice?
No.
Do I get a vote?
Sorry, Mr. Smith.
I don't know if you want to. I wanted to say that Wanda was doing an excellent job, and I would like for her to reconsider. But if that's her decision, that's her decision. I have to say yes.
Minutes from the June 15th, 2020 special meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
Mm-hmm.
Any council discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right. Citizens' comments. Do we have anybody on the line?
No, sir.
Okay.
We have one.
We think we had one from Chad Keister.
We do, but I don't have the ability to print her.
I think.
I might be able to bring it up.
See, I have it on my phone.
Yeah. I understand.
That's what they want from Wanda on there, too.
Um, that was just to take her on.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I can answer it if you would like.
Go ahead. Now, hold on. Go ahead. Go ahead and read that, please.
A question and suggestion for council. Chad Keister, 4592 Bessemer Road, Nelsonville, Ohio, 45764. I would like to ask council what the city is doing to reduce TTHMs in our drinking water and to make sure we meet water quality regulations. I would also like to suggest that the city pursue grants to remediate acid mine drainage in the Nelsonville area that could improve the water quality and fishing habitat in the Nelsonville area.
Thank you. Any discussion on that?
Uh, wait. I just want to say that with the EPA's help and the water plant operators, uh, they have sought permission to change chemicals, have changed chemicals. Uh, we're in our in our proposal to extend new water lines or fix old water lines or whatever. One of the main culprits that causes TTHMs to form is on the list to be replaced. So we have taken really good really good measures. Uh, the final one will be to fix that line going out Kimberly Road. But that's on that water line project. And, uh, that's the main culprit. Most people in Nelsonville are not affected by TTHMs. Most of them are on that dead end line going out Kimberly Road. And our engineering permits working on that project right now. So just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that it is being addressed.
Yeah, I thought we had discussed that a while back about him switching chemicals and that he was actually going down. So.
Scott, is that pretty much?
Yes, sir. You summed it up. And, uh, sorry, I was addressing a technical difficulty. You can be heard, but they can only see me. So trying to fix that. But yes, uh, Greg, you summed it up perfect. Um, you know, I guess just to recap, basically what you said is the manufacturer and EPA said, give this a go because again, the line, the question does need to be replaced, and it is projected to be replaced on the next grant. And in the meantime, we expect to get our TTHM levels down and compliant. And hopefully, uh, when I talked to the water department or water plant earlier, they're looking to reevaluate, I believe in the next two to four weeks. And we should be, we're hoping to be set.
I don't think that we've been out of compliance recently. Um, the, what happened was when our new water plant was built, the allowable was 100 parts per million. And then right after our plant was built, the federal government dropped it to 80 parts per million allowable TTHMs. As a result, uh, we did violate a couple of times during last summer. But I don't think recently since we've changed chemicals, I don't think that we have been, yeah, been out of compliance. But we're taking every measure we can to stay in compliance.
Concur. All right. Okay. Thank you, Greg. All right. Business and organizational comments. Um, I will say, uh, just for me, I would like to call a parks and rec meeting here in the next couple of weeks.
That's not, that's under committee.
Is that right? Okay. I'm a little, uh, so anyway. Okay. Well, then, there we are. So, um, we are at number eight, which is discuss city manager positions.
I'm going to make a motion again to the highest court. Frank is our president's manager.
I'll second it.
Call the roll. Please. Pretty please.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay.
Congratulations, Carl.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right. So let's move on to committee discussions. Okay. I would like to, um, call a parks and rec committee meeting. Um, but I feel like we should wait till we get a full, um, a full thing again so we can get everybody taken care of, um, and go from there. So.
I need to, well, I haven't touched you.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to wait. So.
Probably nails that, uh, seat better. That seat is open and people need to.
Yes. Um, also, uh, Wanda Johnson has resigned, which we stated earlier in the meeting. Uh, we are taking letters of, uh, wanting to be appointed to that position. They need to be turned into the city manager. Um, and we would like to have those, everyone in by the next meeting so that we can discuss what we have.
Uh, Mr. President, was Wanda on a four-year term or a two-year?
She was in a four-year term.
So whoever is appointed will have to run.
In the next year of election.
Yeah.
This year.
One coming up.
And they have to.
No, no, I'm sorry, next year.
Next year.
Yeah. So, yeah. So whoever is appointed will have to run next year.
Next year.
In November. Okay. All right.
Um, I need, I need to do a street committee meeting, but I've got to find out from Carla when her, um, schedule allows. And Greg?
I want to give you a heads up. Well, now, I think there's some, uh, I've heard some citizens talk about wanting to make short street one way.
Yes. I've heard that, too.
So, you know, making it.
One way and, and conter straight one way. Conter alley, we always conter.
Yeah, because it's kind of a, it's a traffic jam back through there. So you have one way out and one way in. Kind of a, et cetera. I just thought I could give you.
Yeah. Actually, I already, I already heard.
We really need to do a utility committee meeting. Me and Scott was talking earlier. We got a bunch of stuff to work on. One, like price contract.
Yep.
I didn't call one this last week because we didn't have the system working.
Okay.
And the law requires that people be able to call in and comment. And we couldn't, we didn't have the ability to do that. So I didn't call a utility committee meeting. But we need to, we really need to get one. And I'm going to try to get one within the next two weeks.
You call, we'll be there.
Well, Scott's getting some stuff ready for us.
Okay.
All right. Um, we do have a police fire meeting tomorrow night to discuss some fire equipment that was added on. And to talk about boarding up.
Seven, six or seven?
Seven. Seven.
Seven.
Okay. Uh, in order to, we need to get an ordinance out for boarding up houses for houses that we've already condemned. Uh, also property that's already condemned to clean up and order. So.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Let's go with the auditor slash treasurer's report. Here, ladies. Auditors first? Yeah, treasurer's first. Treasurer can go first, that's fine.
Okay.
The treasurer's here.
There he is.
Yeah.
The mic's.
Stand there if you want.
You can stand there if you want.
All right, guys.
Mike, if you want to be seen, you can stand right there in the middle.
You are.
You can stand right there in the middle if you want to be seen.
You'll be able to do that.
Oh, yeah. There we go.
Just stand right in front of me.
Yep.
For long here.
Yep. Everybody on the treasurer, more of a special guest. Uh, I don't want to mention him, but it's how we're here today. Uh, treasurer's report for May, ending May 2020. Um, our total funds at month end is $2,474,961.89. Next page. And our total invested funds, the CDs and money market, That's it?
Thank you.
Next. Next. I came in here because we're having problems with the streaming a little bit. They can hear but can't see. So I figured I'd just come in and read through it with you. Um, first thing I wanted to do was last month, but, um, I wanted to commend the treasurer for last, last meeting. It was for last month's report, but last meeting. Uh, for his reports. So not only are his reports, in my opinion, if you're looking closely at them, more in depth, but they're getting closer than any treasurer recently. And that's not a down to any other treasurer. That's just a compliment. So Mike works really hard. This month's report was within $40.13, I believe, when you're running through the city. Was it $500,000 last month or something? Yeah, there was a lot of outstanding checks from last month that cleared to this month. Yeah. So I can imagine most people with an income of $2,000 or $3,000 can't get their checkbook within 40 bucks. And he did it with a half million dollars. So, uh, I think he's doing a really great job and wanted to compliment him. And soon, this hasn't been done in many, many auditors at the city, but the state auditors have decided, not decided, but there's a requirement that the city auditor and the treasurer both have to reconcile the books each. And then we compare reports to each other and then see how close we are. That's actually what state law requires. In my conversations with state auditor's office, they have not seen it in at least three auditors here at the city. So we're hoping by the end of summer to have a whole system set up where every month you can see where both of us compare the city's books versus the bank twice, compare against each other. And conceivably, when the system works, uh, everything is caught, every dime, every penny. And we can prevent things like what happened in the past. So anyway, I'll start with my auditor's report. This is for May 2020. Uh, the first page, the copier, it looks like it didn't pick up. The color's gray. It's just our statement of cash position. This should be a familiar report for most of you. And it's the report that backs up most of my auditor's reports. Uh, jump into the positive for the general fund. You'll notice it's actually sitting at an okay balance. Last meeting, I asked the question, uh, does the large amount of revenues in April and May that the city gets every year, does it hold us off till Christmas? We'll have to see. Uh, but for the moment, general fund looking better than January. Capital improvement looking weak due to a lot of projects currently being run out of there. Lots of expenses, few revenues. Water fund and sewer fund, I highlighted here because they're both sitting around equal. This is right before our $250,000 in debt payments that come out of those funds. So what we typically would like to see is those funds be much higher than what they started the year. And then those big payments come out on July 1st. Instead, they're equal. So just emphasizing what I've talked about in the past, those funds are not picking up the same revenues as we had hoped. The next page is just the cash position. Uh, bigger because there's a lot of data on there. And you guys had asked for closer up reports. It's a lot of data and hard to, to get on a small report. So the next page, another page that we'll continue to see so long as I am here is the question, are our funds healthy? General fund, street, parks, capital, water, sewer compared, on the left side, compared to what would be equal to 50% of a year's worth of expenses or six months of expenses? The definition of healthy in most basic financial literacy courses. So we're not there in most of them. On the next page, I look back eight years. This is part of another series I've been trying to discuss with you guys and the public for the last six months. First, we looked back a year. Now we're looking, and then three, five. And this month, I decided to go back eight. And this will be the last time I do this for this fiscal year. You'll see the general fund, um, $1.46 million eight years ago, uh, May 31st, $157,000. That's a $1.4 million drop in funds. The general fund, water fund from 526 to 485. And the sewer, uh, sewer fund from 626,000 to 337. That's a drop of nearly 300,000. And street funds somewhat holding even with a, it actually should say a decrease of 41,000 over eight years. So on the next page, I have what can we learn from eight years ago? I put down, just repeating from last time, five-year look backs are important. We did that last month, so I decided to take, do one more step in the series and look back eight years. Eight years ago, the city had $4.53 million in the bank. Today, we have 1.8 million. In eight years, that means we have spent over 60%. Well, we've spent 100% of the regular expenses of those years and then 60% of the carryover balance. So a burn rate of over 60% of our money in the bank um, in eight years is pretty quick. And an important note here, most revenues have risen slightly or stagnated. However, expenses have risen steadily the entire time. This includes inflation costs for equipment, project-related debt payments, which is 250,000 for the water project alone, was added between eight years ago and today. And then steady increases in salary and insurance costs. Below that, you'll see, for example, though we actually have fewer employees at City Hall than eight years ago, the average wage is higher and health insurance costs us more than $80,000 more than it did eight years ago. So I guess trying to paint the picture, we have fewer employees, but it actually costs more per employee because of inflation and then increasing cost for equipment. And then, of course, the big water and sewer plant debt payments. Important numbers or important notes about May's numbers on the next page. We are lagging a little still in water and sewer collections. May 31st, we'd expect around 42% of our expected income in those funds. Water was at 38, sewer at 32. If you play that out for the second half of the year, you would expect around a 4% to 16%. 4% minimum, 16% maximum deficit or shortfall. Uh, 4 would not be that interesting. 16% would be pretty noteworthy for our planning purposes for next year. Income tax collections match the expectation for the month of May. So we, we collected more than 1/12 of the expected income taxes for, uh, during the month of May, which is good. Gas tax collections are far below. Initial projections continue to miss between 25 and 40% the last four months. And, uh, just a note that expenses have been held down well by the city manager, who asks me pretty much for a daily update on what's coming in, what's going out, and how he can make it better. Uh, leaving us in a position I put on here, uh, where there are some areas that need work, but our house is not on fire like most cities near us. My last page, I just want to issue a reminder. COVID-19, I got another letter from the county auditor, or email, I guess, letter is an email. But she reiterated, along with state officials, we see moderate income tax decreases. No change in property tax collections, large decreases in gas tax and decreases in water and sewer revenue due to dorms, schools, businesses shut down. Um, Judy Smith was awarded a promotion to deputy auditor after we had a pretty tough review of some really excellent candidates. Uh, so I wanted to say congrats to Judy, especially if she's watching, or I guess listening, since the video is not working. I wanted to ask council support tonight for the water abatement policy that my office has requested. Uh, and remind everyone in the room and at home, income tax deadline is coming up July 15th. Everyone in town is required by state law to file income or no income. And, uh, we plan to be just as strict as Rita would have been. So if you don't file, you will have an automatic fee penalty. And then, as Gary Hunter can back up, the city's allowed to enforce judgments against you for not filing your income taxes. So please file your income taxes. And if you are at home, you can find this report online at cityofnelsonville.com. Thank you.
I just want to make one, one comment. I mean, if you look back eight years ago, of course, our, our funds were healthier because we fixed a lot of things since. About eight years ago, we didn't David May's troops. We didn't replace any equipment. We didn't fix any water line. We have spent quite a bit of money. But for the five-year look ahead, if you don't fix them now, it's just going to get worse. So you have to spend a little bit and correct, fix them correctly. Just don't put a band-aid on. So when you're fixing them, you're also saving what you would lose as far as leaks or going back and refixing roofs or whatever. And then versus fix them correctly the first time and get past it, suffer through it. And then down the road, within five-year plan, should pay off. You'll see these numbers back again. So that's what I'm saying.
Well, Dan, I wanted to add to that. Our water fund last had revenues of $119,442 and our expenses were $67,000 and change. And that ended up, we gained $51,546 in the water, water fund last month. So, um, yeah. And we're using, we're doing that, planning on doing a big project fixing lines so we don't have to spend the overtime and work our, work our workers to death and never have a day off.
Yep.
So we're planning, we're trying to raise funds to be able to make permanent fixes and, uh, hopefully, uh, cut down on the overtime because at Saturday afternoon or Saturday evening or Sunday morning, you get a water line. People have to have water and you have to call the people in and pay premium rates to fix it. So.
Or I did just, if I could real quick, I, I agree with Mr. Sherman on, uh, his assessment. That's really your guys' wheelhouse as far as what's been done in the end. Um, but I did just want to say that this has just been part of a series of basically bringing a full understanding of where we've come from. I feel like when I started council, the question of how much money we had five years ago couldn't be answered by almost anyone in the room. And it's no offense to anyone at the time. It's just, I think it takes a long time to get everybody up to speed all together. And then, like he said, look forward five years. Uh, and then as far as the water fund goes, I just want to remind you, it just, it does take five months of that kind of surplus to build up for each water payment every six months.
Taylor, I had a couple of things.
Yes.
First one, I, I would hope that the average wage has went up since 2012.
Absolutely.
Um, and the second, I was just curious, in the general fund, the decrease of $1,395,000, do you have like any information you can give us that you know of on how that happened at all? Or just general spending or?
Well, so I think it's a couple of things. The income tax revenue is one of the only revenues that's decreased over the last 10 years. So water fund has gone below. I mean, if you think about 2016, the water rate went up 20% that year. Water and sewer rates have gone up. Income tax rate has stayed the same. And then we've lost major employers. And that, of course, is the main driver of the general funds. Um, but also less taxes. Yeah. So, but I'll also say that that fund also is one of the, is, since most people are paid out of that fund, it impacts the stresses of what you talked about earlier. We've had to cut staff due to things like losing the prison. But then, even though we've cut staff, our health insurance costs are over $80,000 more per year, even though we're covering fewer employees. So we're, we're running into some expenses that every city experiences. We're not unique in this scenario. Um, I don't bring it forward as a critique of the city or city council. I bring it forward as a note so that we can respond to it. Really, actually, it's not even my job. It's really you guys and the city manager so you guys can respond to it.
Okay, thank you.
If that's helpful, yeah. Thank you. Yeah.
The health insurance costs are a curtain in employees, too, because they pick up a portion of the, of the health insurance. But our health insurance since, uh, 2010 in the last decade has almost tripled.
Well, that's because you have an aging workforce.
Well, it's because of what happened to health insurance rates.
Well, that too, but you have an aging workforce, and you have a lot of big claims, I believe, in this.
Yeah, so, we, it's, our employers are hurt from it too, because they have to pay a portion of their health insurance, and they don't make as much, as big a wage just what other places are paid, and it hurts them too to have to pay more for health insurance.
Thank you.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor's Court Report.
Reconciled Report, May 2020, prepared by Andy Purce. The beginning bank balance for April 2020 was four-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. The ending bank balance for May 2020 was one-thousand-four-hundred-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Less outstanding check to municipal court was seven dollars and fifty cents, and payable to the city of Nelsonville was one-thousand-and-thirty-one dollars and two cents.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
All right, Code Enforcement Act Day.
Good evening, council and citizens. I want to begin by giving you how many warnings and citations I issued in the last sixty days. So, I issued one-hundred-and-twenty-eight warnings, eighty-two of those complaints were grass-related or warnings were grass-related. As a reminder, please keep your grass under eight inches. The code office is aware that we've had a lot of substantial amount of rainfall this season, but please maintain your lawns, because that's quite a bit, eighty-two.
Yeah, I've got two of them.
Eighty-two warnings, yeah. Forty-two citations went into mayor's court, and all the rest of them are in various stages of compliance. I want to give you an update on the prosecutor's office and myself. Last week, Mr. Blackburn, our county prosecutor, along with his team, assisted the code office last week on the initial process of condemning six blighted properties that have not had water or sewer services for over a decade. These properties are located on St. Charles Street, Patton Street, High Street, Poplar Street, and Meyer Street. Also, the code office, along with assistance from the utilities department and the Athens County Prosecutor's Community Justice, the ACE diversion program, boarded up and removed refuge from 611 Patton, 784 Poplar, and 823 Walnut Street. And so, I just want to remind citizens to trim and cut back any trees, I've been getting a lot of complaints, to cut back any trees or shrubs from sidewalks and the backside of their alley. And just please keep your right-of-way clear, I mean, it's just the safety of the community in driving along those alleyways and streets. That's it.
I have a question.
Yes.
I just wondered if maybe you have, for anyone listening that doesn't know, do you have, like, any one, like, you could recommend, or at least, maybe not vouch for, but any numbers for someone people could call that need help to cut their trees or anything?
So, I do have a referral list of individuals that mow grass in the city, so if someone's interested, they can email me, and I can email that referral list out. I can't say that those individuals are available, because a lot of them have yards cutting currently in the city, but I've got probably five or six names of individuals.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Thank you, Becky. Appreciate it. The fastest code was pushed out late, haven't we?
That was fun to correct, yeah.
That was pretty impressive. Thank you. Who asked a question? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, back, back.
Yes.
How's the shopping cart hornet going?
So, currently, I've sent out about six emails. I've had two shopping cart emails that they've actually retrieved, but Amy from the main corporate office called me, and she's got some fears about blowing on private property. I discussed with her that she could do the same thing I'm doing, I knock on doors and ask if I could pick up the carts since it belongs to Kroger. She doesn't feel comfortable doing that and putting her staff in that situation. So, the last update I had was, they're not for sure if they're gonna come and get the carts, so right now I have four carts in the lot. I will be sending out a certified letter letting them know that I've got four carts that they can come and get, and we'll see if she's gonna actually retrieve them from here, so.
Did she want you to go with her, did she?
She didn't ask if I could go with them, I would.
That would probably be the situation.
Probably, probably the trend.
So, the problem is, before we passed the code, I was taking it to them, and then I was emailing and bringing it back here and picking them up, and then they were coming here and getting them. She's asked if I can take them, and then they just pay me for them at the store. I told her that our code's not written that way, I would have to talk with Gary to see if, on properties that she doesn't want to go in, and she's afraid of trespassing.
That would keep us from having to store them, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I mean, that would be up to you guys, that would be up to Gary, I would be fine to get them from private property and take it to them, and they just pay the fee.
I'd like to suggest that.
Yeah.
The only thing I do differently is I just knock on the door, and if someone answers, I say, listen, you have property that does not belong to you on your property, I'm taking it, it belongs to Kroger, and I fish them out of the river, too. I fish multiple carts out of the river. Harry's helped me pull them out, I've had volunteers help me pull them out.
That could be part of his rescue training.
Rescue me.
So, we've pulled carts out of the river, I think the homeless kind of.
I doubt it, right?
Right. Some of our vagrants in the community, I say, push them down with their groceries. I tried to brainstorm with her, one of the things that I mentioned was the carts that you can actually go to the yard, you know, you see a lot of people that.
The alleyway.
They take them to yard selling trips and big flea markets, these carts that have baskets on them that you pull them, they're like forty dollars or something, you can buy them on Amazon. I suggested they sell those there, and just sell them to the individual that doesn't have a cart, so they can cart their groceries home. I suggested putting locks on the wheel of the cart, so when it gets past a certain area, it just locks up. I suggested to Kroger, they charge them a five-dollar fee, and then they get their five dollars when they return with the cart.
Do like Aldi, where they.
The Aldi.
Yeah, I have tried.
I've got a quarter to five dollars. I have a suggestion, and I want to see what you think of it, is that we get them to post signs, do not take the cart from the lots, and we pass an ordinance that is prima facie the evidence of theft by taking it from the lot.
I think that's a little rough.
Yeah. I would be willing to take it back to them, if that's something that they would want to do, if you guys are.
You've heard of the Saint Peter.
Yeah.
Right, where they keep touching the store, and.
Do it, yeah.
Okay.
Get rid of them.
I kind of think that they are victims, you know, people are stealing their carts, and I'd like to see some sort of punishment for stealing their carts.
Well, I can't cite people.
I know.
That would be our police force that has to cite the folks that are taking the carts, and you have to find those individuals.
Have to catch them walking down.
Have to catch them doing it, then you have to sign them, so I can't do that. They are locking the carts up at night, I did go by, they reduced their number of carts, they're locking them up. I'm praying that in the next month, that we will have very little carts on our street and in our river. And that was my whole goal, was to make sure carts weren't out in the street, they weren't out, you know, at Los Mariachus in the parking lot, they're everywhere, they're throughout town, so.
Does Kroger deliver here for nothing?
Does Kroger delivers?
For nothing.
I don't know, I don't think so.
Well, you have, I believe you have council approval, unanimously just take them back and collect them.
Okay, I'll just.
Now, come, pick up here and pay the fee.
I can do that, if they feel safer that way, I've never had a problem retrieving the carts, no one argues with me, as a matter of fact, they made me to take them back so they don't have to.
Yeah.
All right, to be honest, so.
Right, that big dog, the bounty hunter.
I don't know about all that, but.
Thank you, Ms. Harper.
You're welcome.
All right, now, we're moving on. We are to the second reading of ordinance 37-20.
I want to offer an amendment on that before it's read.
Okay.
I have a problem with the sentence, I feel that the language set, the first sentence, might be interpreted to keep the city manager from adjusting water bills, and I talked to him with it today, and he agrees with my solution, and I'd just like to take, hereby repeal, I make a motion to remove the language, says hereby repeals any other water abatement policy, because we have no other water abatement policy right now. So, I'd like to make a motion to just to remove that sentence from this ordinance, and then, after that, I'll may offer another ordinance to suspend the rule, so we can go ahead and pass it.
Would that work, Gary?
I don't understand, usually the hereby repeals is so you don't get into conflicts.
We don't have any, we don't have any other set for our water policy, and.
Well, you don't have any other official, I suppose, I think, what's the purpose of repealing?
Because in the water policy, if the city manager can adjust water rates, and I think if this can be interpreted to say that he can adjust water and sewer rates, like if someone has a big leak, he can, and the leak didn't go through the sewer, he can adjust it, and I think he should have that ability, no one's telling him he has to, but I think this takes that ability away from him, and I like for, just to have that sentence removed, because we have no other water abatement policy right now.
Or we could add that the city manager may, at his discretion.
I was gonna do that in a committee meeting, but we didn't have the equipment, and I couldn't get the committee meeting call.
I would rather you do it that way, Carla, if you repeal, you know, you're repealing, you want to repeal anything that's inconsistent, or we end up barking you.
Do we have to have a committee meeting to do that?
No, we could add a, I'd be fine with adding a sentence that says the city manager, at his discretion, may.
Yeah.
Got it.
That sounds good.
Someone second my motion.
Right after, I'll second, right after the water adjustment abatement policy, second line, and at the very end, right there. So, does the city manager, at his discretion, may.
May adjust.
May adjust water bills?
Water and sewer bills.
Just water bills, right?
Well, it's water and sewer.
Well, they would adjust the sewer off the water.
How they usually do, they usually adjust the sewer off the water.
If it's a leak, it's not going to just, so.
This is a.
It's a water.
It's a water adjustment.
Water bill. Okay, you can use the water to water.
It doesn't say water and sewer anyway, it just says water.
Okay, that's fine.
Water?
Yeah.
Water, yes, yeah.
Someone second it?
I didn't.
Yeah, tell me, if he's seconding everything, then I.
I was trying.
This is what's going on.
No, I'm good.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
This is just on the amendment of it, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, okay, just want to know where, make sure I'm on the same page there.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
And since this is like, gonna be, not make, go back to first reading, I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules.
Second. Or are you gonna read it?
Yeah, it's gonna skip. Well, I just wanted to add the language, suspend the rule, yeah.
You're right.
Take it away.
Ordinance 37-20, an ordinance adopting a water district water loss abatement policy. Whereas Nelsonville desires to adopt a water district water loss abatement policy, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that one, that the city of Nelsonville wants to follow a water abatement loss policy, and hereby repeals any other water adjustment abatement policy. The city, the city manager, at his discretion, may adjust water bills. The Nelsonville Water District Water Loss Abatement Policy allows customers in good standing, i.e., current on all bills and charges, who have enrolled and paid the annual fee to receive credit on their water bills, up to five-hundred dollars maximum per year per customer for water loss due to leaks which occur on their size of the meter. The annual fee is thirty dollars per customer, is due in the office before the policy can begin. The abatement policy will be in effect for a water loss due to such a leak occurring during the following twelve months. This policy applies only to the account holder, the name on the account, of a residence five-eighths inch to one-inch meter set. New customers have the opportunity to sign up for the policy at a prorated rate and coverage. New owners/tenants will be prorated to calculate the fee required and the maximum coverage. The fees are non-transferable, and no refunds will be generated upon finalizing an account. Landowners may sign up for the abatement policy for rental properties. The coverage would be for each water tap and would follow the same requirements and policies. All costs for repairs remain the responsibility of the owner/account holder. The customer is required to notify the water office when a water leak is discovered and when repairs are completed. This will ensure that the correct timeframe is being used to calculate the loss. Once Nelsonville verifies the occurrence, the customer is required to pay their average usage for that month, which is held in the computer based on the last twelve months, or as many as are on file, if fewer than twelve exist. The balance of the bill would be credited, not exceeding the five-hundred-dollar yearly maximum. After the maximum amount is reached, the customer is responsible for any additional costs or water leaks for the remainder of the year. Credits cannot be used to cover the cost of filling a pool, as this is not a leak. The district retains the right to require proof of repair, such as receipt, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, duly enacted by council on.
Well, it would say, right now, it would say on second reading on.
Still read second reading.
On July, or whatever it is.
Do you want to wait a second?
No, it'd be, the second reading will be two weeks away, so.
We're suspended.
You're gonna suspend the rule, I know, but.
Yeah.
Negative, right, it has to.
Two weeks.
Whatever the first reading in July is.
The ninth, maybe?
The sixth. The sixth? No, that's not the first reading.
No, thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Duly enacted by council on second reading on the thirteenth day of July 2020, Nelsonville City Council.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance 43-20, get it on second reading. Ordinance number 43-20, an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriations ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance the following, the sum of two-thousand-five-hundred dollars from the street construction fund number 200 to line item number 200-150-80009, tree trimming and removal. Nine-thousand-thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents from capital improvement fund number 600 to line item 600-600-67596, fire department equipment. Whereas the appropriations ordinance needs to be amended to appropriate monies for tree trimming and removal, and for fire equipment. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. One, the 2020 appropriations are amended to appropriate the following sums for the unappropriated balance to the designated line item. The sum of two-thousand-five-hundred dollars from the street construction fund number 200 to line item 200-150-80009, tree trimming and removal. Nine-thousand-thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents from capital improvement fund number 600 to line item 600-600-67596, fire department equipment. Two, the total appropriations are increased by said amount. Three, this ordinance shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law, duly enacted by council on second reading on the 22nd day of June 2020, Nelsonville City Council.
Mr. President, I thought there was a, gonna be a change to end to this one, or was there six hundred dollars or something?
Oh, no, so we're gonna discuss that tomorrow night, and we'll just bring out another appropriation.
Council discussion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance 43-20, get it on second reading. Ordinance number 43-20, an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriations ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance the following, the sum of two-thousand-five-hundred dollars from the street construction fund number 200 to line item number 200-150-80009, tree trimming and removal. Nine-thousand-thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents from capital improvement fund number 600 to line item 600-600-67596, fire department equipment. Two, the total appropriations are increased by said amount. Three, this ordinance shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law, duly enacted by council on second reading on the 22nd day of June 2020, Nelsonville City Council.
Mr. President, I thought there was a, gonna be a change to end to this one, or was there six hundred dollars or something?
Oh, no, so we're gonna discuss that tomorrow night, and we'll just bring out another appropriation.
Council discussion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Go through your job.
Second.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Whereas the appropriations ordinance needs to be amended to appropriate monies for tree trimming and removal and for fire equipment. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. One, the two thousand and twenty appropriations are amended to appropriate the following sums for the unappropriated balance to the designated line item. The sum of two thousand five hundred dollars from the street construction fund number two hundred to line item two hundred dash one fifty dash eight zero 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 nine tree trimming and removal. Nine thousand thirty six dollars and seventy five cents from capital improvement fund number six hundred to line item six hundred dash six hundred dash six seven five nine six fire department equipment. Two, the total appropriations are increased by said amount. Three, this ordinance shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law, duly enacted by council on second reading on the twenty second day of June two thousand and twenty, Nelsonville City Council.
Uh, Mr. President, I thought there was a, going to be a change to end to this one or was there six hundred dollars or something?
Oh, no, so we're going to discuss that tomorrow night and we'll just bring out another appropriation.
Council discussion?
Motion to adopt?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dundee?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ordinance forty six dash twenty. Need someone to introduce.
I'll introduce it.
Ordinance forty six dash twenty and ordinance accepting a donation from the Baird Foundation of five thousand dollars for the Aquatic Center upgrades and declaring an emergency. Whereas the Baird Foundation has made a donation of five thousand dollars for Aquatic Center upgrades. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. One, the city of Nelsonville accepts a generous five thousand dollar donation from the Baird Foundation for Aquatic Center upgrades. Two, the city of Nelsonville thanks the Baird Foundation for this donation and all the work over the years they do to make Nelsonville a better place to live. Three, the clerk of council is directed to send a copy of this ordinance to the Baird Foundation. Four, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of public peace, health and safety of said city of Nelsonville for the reason that the Aquatic Center opening is being held up until the upgrades are complete. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and immediately after its passage. Duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the twenty second day of June two thousand and twenty, Nelsonville City Council.
Council discussion? Motion to suspend. Second.
Mr. Dundee?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dundee?
Yes.
Ordinance.
Miss McPain to the, uh, agenda? Miss McPain to the agenda?
Forty seven twenty is missing. But it's in here.
The second page of the agenda. That's what it is.
Scott printed for me because I could not get. You're going to need it?
Yeah, it's missing. All right. We're going to get her some more. I'll go over there. All right, uh, forty seven, ordinance forty seven dash twenty. Uh, need someone to introduce this.
Ordinance forty seven dash twenty and ordinance admitting the two thousand and twenty appropriations ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance the following. The sum of five thousand dollars from the Baird Fund number eight fifty to line item number eight fifty dash eight fifty dash four six zero 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 pool donations expense. Whereas the appropriations ordinance needs to be amended to appropriate monies donated by the Baird Foundation for Aquatic Center upgrades. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. One, the two thousand and twenty appropriations are amended to appropriate the following sums for the unappropriated balance to the designated line item. The sum of five thousand dollars from the Baird Fund number eight fifty to line item eight fifty dash eight fifty dash four six zero zero pool donations expense. Two, the total appropriations are increased by said amount. Three, this ordinance shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law, duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the twenty second day of June two thousand and twenty, Nelsonville City Council.
Council discussion? Motion to suspend. Second.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dundee?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dundee?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Okay, I believe we're at city manager's report.
Can we have any calls?
Hello?
Do we have anybody calling in or anything, Scott?
Uh, no, sir. I don't have any call ins and, uh, the only question, uh, that I have, that I can see is what about the money from the levy renewal for the pool? Is it all gone?
The, the levy renewal, okay, go ahead. Start your report. Already?
Oh.
The street levy?
The street, the pool levy, it's been gone about three years.
It's been gone for about three years.
Okay. Great. So we've had a lot going on. Uh, closed down Canal Street, or sorry, opened up Canal Street, closed down Chestnut. And, uh, moving the sewer across. Um, if you've seen Canal Street, don't freak out. We're still coming back to do the curb. And, uh, the one massive speed bump down there is gone. I'm not sure if anybody's missed that thing. And, uh, we still do have a little drop off that we're going to address, but, uh, it is getting better on that side. Sewer's progressing. We are going to make up some flyers just to remind everybody along through there because it's going to be such an ex- duration of dust and everything else. You know, that way they can make any, uh, one citizen made a great, you know, uh, recommendation today for that flyer. Uh, and because they were going to do painting around their house and now knowing how long this is going to take, they're going to wait till after this to do the painting, which I thought was a great suggestion. So, uh, a lot going on with that. They started Second Street down next to Taco Bell. They're going to paint that. That's part of the neighborhood revitalization. Uh, grant. Hopefully, the plan is they raise it up two inches higher than the highest point, which should eliminate the flooding. We have addressed some flooding around the city, which we've come up with a solution that, uh, is working so far. And an example would be Poplar Street had flooding at the, uh, storm drains. And, uh, we figured out the problem was that there's so many layers of asphalt there and road there that, you know, the curbs are practically gone anyway. And, uh, we were able to cut back a chunk. And what that did is allow air to get in there. Anyways, long story short, we're fixing a lot of storm drain issues at no cost. It's just a matter of putting out there. Cutting out asphalt and, uh, letting them flow a lot better. Unfortunately, at the pool, the pump is waiting on parts to be rebuilt. I, unfortunately, the cost of a new pump was only six hundred dollars more than a rebuild. And the only reason why I say unfortunately is it was a six to ten week lead time. So I did not opt for the new motor. Instead, we are, uh, rebuilding the old one. What I would like to do is either budget it next year, the year after, you know, plan ahead for that motor to be replaced with a, a brand new and more modern parts and such. Because, uh, the one we have now is so old, original to the pool, that parts were very scarce. Hope, I, I don't even want to set a date. If we're lucky, we'll get the pump back at the end of this week. And we'll go from there. But, uh, right now we're still waiting on the parts to show up at the, uh, uh, at the repair facility. I feel like there's a whole bunch of other things that I'm jumping through and missing, but a lot of it's just been the grand stuff happening around town and, uh, you know, construction moves along. Uh, Jason has every intention of starting the pothole repairs right after the Fourth of July holiday. A lot more folks are cycling through their leave or vacation rather right now. And, uh, so that leaves us limited staff to do the mowing, pool and basic day-to-day operations. So when everybody, for the most part, when everybody's back after the fourth, we'll get after the potholes and start moving out from there. And lastly, I just want to thank council for the opportunity to serve Nelsonville, also to the citizens for their support. Uh, thank you very much. I'm extremely humbled and grateful. And I'll do my best not to let any of you down. And that's all here.
Scott, can we get the council person for me, please?
Can we give her some ink for her printer, please?
Yes, sir. I thought it was already done. I'll, I'll make sure it gets done tomorrow if it's not already done.
Thank you. All right. So here's, uh, he just did the. Okay.
Mr. President, I do need an executive session for threatened or pending litigation shortly.
Okay. All right, um. We gotta go do the good order first, good the order, um. Mr. Sherman?
I'd like to thank council for supporting Mr. Frank in, uh, becoming our next city manager. Glad to see you hometown boy here. I think he does a great job. I think he's great for the city. And I just want to thank all of you for your support. Thank you.
Um, congratulations to Scott and, uh, I meant to mention this last, uh, meeting, but, um, I've been asking my neighbors, uh, to make sure that they filled out the census, but, um, folks in Nelsonville, if you'll please make sure that you get your census completed. Uh, that would be great for the city. So, thank you. Um, once again, thank, uh, congratulations to Scott Frank. Also, um, I would just like to remind everybody that, uh, difference of opinion doesn't necessarily make you wrong. So, um, you know, there's a lot of good people here on council and, uh, you know, although I might not agree with them, you might not agree with them, that doesn't make them wrong. So, uh, everybody keep an open mind and, uh, we will get the business taken care of. So, thank you.
We're in town, see.
Sorry, did I? Can't go?
I'm getting old.
Can't go back. Go ahead.
Me. Um, I just wanted to say congratulations to Scott also. And Corey kind of stole what I wanted to say. I wanted to say to make sure that everyone fills out their census because it is very, very important. I think we're only at like forty percent now. And that's not good. So please remind your neighbors and family to fill out the census.
Uh, congratulations, Scott. Um, I wanted to just set something straight. I, I want everybody to know that I did cancel the street committee meeting because we could not broadcast it and it's against the law. And I have nothing against protesting. I used to do it in the seventies, the sixties and seventies, so.
Show your age later.
No. That's it.
Mr. Smith?
I want to say that I kind of go along with, with Linda. I don't know that we had a difference of opinion. I think people wanted to, to wait a couple of days to, to have the president council and the vice president council meet and discuss some things with Scott. And I don't know that there really was a different opinion. There was four people didn't want to vote last Monday night. And they wanted to wait till today to vote. So, uh, I think we are unanimous and I don't know whether to congratulate Scott or give him my condolences because it's, it's really a tough job. So, that's what I want to say. And I want to add about the census. We will be a city government regardless of what happens with the census. And that the only thing you can do by not filling your census out is cause your water and your sewer bill to go up. Because for instance, we're building a brand new sewer plant. And right now is we are, we've had to raise rates, uh, rates because we're paying four million dollars out of that eighteen million dollar plant. The rest of it is grants and loan forgiveness. And if going to the future, we try to fix these things. If we lose that funding that, that we currently get, the only thing we can do, the EPA is not going to allow us to have bad water lines. They're not going to allow us to operate the water plant and the sewer plant below standards. And the only thing we could, if we lose that funding that is tied to that census, the only thing we can do is raise rates. And I, I just encourage people to get that census in because that has to do with money on yeah, getting streets fixed, money on getting water and sewer fixed. And it's just very important that we get every census form in we can.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, uh, motion to go into the executive sessions to discuss pending litigation.
Threatened or pending litigation.
Threatened or pending litigation.
Yeah, I also think Scott wanted to discuss personnel. Uh, he told me earlier, do you still, Scott?
If you guys want, I can give you a quick update on just a couple of things going on. And, uh, I can come there and shut off the system and you guys can have executive session on there.
So the executive session is for personnel matters also. You're inviting in who?
Mr. Hunter.
And?
The city manager.
The city manager.
I'm going to make that motion. I did.
Okay, well. Second.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Watkins?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dundee?
Yes.
I keep forgetting.